She's not, she's not gonna be here.
Oh, at all?
I don't think she's gonna make it, right? Here, she's not gonna make it at all. Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Do you have the, uh, the check out there? And there was your... These are alkyas, I'm over for my wife.
Good evening. The Monday, January 23rd Common Council Meeting is now in session. Our invocation tonight is by the Reverend Chip Ralph, Minister at the First Unitarian Church of South Bend. Thank you, sir, for coming. Do y'all please stand?
Thank you. Let us pray. Spirit of life and depth, source of change and infinite love. We are grateful for this day. We are grateful to be alive and as well as we are. We are grateful for the opportunity to participate in the work of our city. We are grateful to have witnessed once again the peaceful transition of power in our nation's capital. We desire safety and security for the peoples of Burundi and Gambia, and we are grateful that our leaders obey the rules of our constitution. We are grateful for the reminders that all power comes from the people. We are energized by the millions who marched in our city and around the world. We pledge to continue participating in the governance of our populace. We are grateful for these council members. We desire that courage and compassion guide them as they do the work of our city, including healing its divisions and promoting real opportunity and real equality for all. So may we be, and amen.
Thank you. I proudly testify, United States of America, in due time, with the same standing under government, individual citizens, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Follow the roll call, please.
Councilmember Preston?
Here.
Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Broden?
Here.
Councilmember Varnett?
Present.
Vice President Davis?
Present.
Councilmember Gordy?
Uh, here.
Councilmember Ferlick?
Here.
Councilmember White, excused. President Tim Scott?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Subcommittee on Minutes, please.
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 9th, 2017, meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Before we get started, if you would, please turn your cell phones to sideways. Uh, if you are here for Bill 6616 regarding the water rates, that is continued. We will not hear 6616. Tonight, we do not have any reports from the city. Uh, the city is represented by James Mueller and Suzanne Fritzberg from the back. This time, I'll, uh, accept the motion to rise and go to the Committee of the Whole. Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the full Council meeting where the full Council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, you will have the opportunity, as a member of the public, to speak either in favor or against. Uh, you have a time limit per ordinance of five minutes. With that, would the city clerk please read Bill 7716?
7716. Public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 3720 Lincoln Way West, Councilman District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Could I entertain a motion to accept the substitution?
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a committee report?
Yes. The zoning inauguration committee met this afternoon, and we bring Bill 77-16 to the full Council with no recommendation.
Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Angela Smith in the Area Plan Commission with offices on the 11th floor of this building. Uh, the property owner is seeking to rezone the parcel highlighted here in red from, um, single family to MU Mid Use District. Um, the properties across the street, there's single, there's single family homes zoned FS2, single family and two family, and local businesses zoned LB Local Business. To the east is a restaurant zoned LB Local Business. To the south, there's single family homes zoned FS1, and to the west is a commercial business zoned GB General Business. The site is currently contains a single family home and some, uh, trees and vegetation. In this immaterial, you can see that the off, the building off to the right is the general business warehouse type building that's located to the west. The current site plan comprises about two acres with 9,100 square foot retail store located, uh, corner entrance, and at least 50% of the building facade located within the maximum setback allowed to the Mid Use District. Um, the proposed parking in this configuration is to the west, and they would comply with all the landscape requirements as required by the city of South Bend. The comprehensive plan for the west side Main Street of the South Bend, 2013, called for development at the Sheridan mode that is a commercial within help with an urban character where the buildings front and line the streets and parkings located to the rear, and then serves as a transition to single family residential further to the east. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation.
Uh, with that, is the petitioner present? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is John Mortula. I work with the Zerabat Group located at 14600 Detroit, New England, in Lakewood, Ohio. Uh, following the committee meeting, uh, we did meet with the, uh, adjacent property to, uh, our east, which is the Volcano Restaurant, and, uh, after they had time to deliberate and just prior to this meeting, uh, one of the plans that we had talked about was shifting the building towards the west. They're not so much in agreement with this plan. This is the plan we created between, uh, communicating and, and, and tonight. Um, they would prefer to see the building back further away from the road to increase the visibility even more so than was shown on this plan. So again, this is, this is something different than what we saw this afternoon, but it's something that the Volcano Restaurant would like to see it back. Sort of kind of in line with where we previously had it. If I could step up here. So previously, the building was, uh, in this area here. They prefer to keep it in that same plane, but towards the western property line. And then the, uh, step back lines from that would then be 40 feet, uh, on the close side where the front door would be, and then 68 feet, um, on the other corner, which would turn it to the western property line. We're okay with that. I don't know about staff. That would require a variance if we stay with the, if we, our request is based on M U Zone Classic. MU requires half the building to be within 5 feet and 20 feet, so that would not be within the 5 feet and 20 feet. It wouldn't be parking in there, so you'd still have the, the, the designing concept and the connectivity. And I know staff have had a chance to look at this, both community development and the county, so we're okay tabling this for tonight, uh, to give staff some time to think about that. Uh, we respect the process and, uh, um, and then, uh, you know, I guess just to summarize what, uh, kind of wrapping up what we talked about earlier, we, we've committed to the, the, the building having the four-sided architecture that means the one side and the front of the other two. We're fine with that. We're also fine with adding sidewalk along our entire frontage. If you look at the aerial, there's actually a sidewalk at the hotel, which is, I know a lot of customers of the restaurant, and there's other sidewalks in this area, so having a sidewalk here would, would not be totally out of character, and we're, we're certainly fine with that. I could go on.
The petitioner has requested a continuation. Could I entertain a motion to continue this bill?
Or to continue Sub 7716 until, uh, what will be the date for the next meeting?
13. Second.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much.
I just say thank you for that, because I really appreciate that, and when we get along, meeting with the neighbors, it really does help. Thank you so kindly.
City clerk, would you please read 7816?
7816. Public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at a 119.89 acre tract of land near the corner of Mayflower Road and Adams Road abutting the St. Joseph Valley Parkway, Councilman District Number One, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Yes, the zoning inauguration committee met, and we, uh, bringing Bill 7816 with no recommendation.
Good evening. Angela Smith in the Area Plan Commission with offices on the 11th floor of this building. First, I'd like to apologize for having to leave from the committee meeting. I had a prior engagement that when we ran long, I could not get out of, I could not leave my kids sitting at school, so I will answer any questions that you, uh, may have come up if I missed them during that time. I'll do my best to clarify as we go on. Uh, the property owner is seeking to rezone the parcel highlighted here in red, and only the parcel highlighted here in red. It's only the portion that is east of the bypass. Um, the zoning ordinance is based on the legal description, and we certify that the legal description as described in the ordinance is the, uh, area highlighted here in red. The site's currently zoned PUD, which was zoned to in 2005. In 2010, that PUD expired. In 2013, the city passed an ordinance that no longer required timelines on PUDs, but by that point, it had already expired, so we're kind of in this position where it's zoned PUD, but there's no active plan for us to refer back to. When we met with the petitioner, um, and all their uses were allowed under the LI Light Industrial District, we advised them to seek that zoning district instead of trying to, uh, go back through the process there. To the east are single family homes zoned our single family in the county, and that's east of both portions of the site. The south is the Merriquard City Interstate 890 zoned PUD. To the west, across the bypass, you have a portion of our single family in the county and a portion zoned PUD in the city of South Bend. The site's currently vacant. You can see the bypass there in this illustration, and no more snow. This was during the winter months, though. Again, this is looking across Mayflower Road. There's not much to see on the site as it is now, other than the woods there are the properties to the south of the site, which are currently zoned our single family. The property includes all 119 acres to be rezoned. The development so far has only anticipated development for the portion of Lot A shown here, which is the plan, um, but reserved the remainder of the site for the light industrial uses. Since the PUD expired, if they didn't include the whole parcel, that would also be expired, and they'd have to address it at some point anyway, so they decided to adjourn the 119 acres at the same time. Um, the site that's shown here includes a 315,000 square foot industrial facility working and loading. The petitioner can speak more about the specific use in question, but this is an illustration of how the site may be laid out. This comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with no recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a petitioner present? Please state your name and address.
Thank you, and thank you, Angela. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Brian McMorro, 750 Lincoln Way East, Avon Marsh Consultants. On behalf of the petitioner, I'm joined by Jeff Smoke, GLC, Portage Prairie Three, the contract purchaser, Mr. Nordwist, who's a member of the family that owns the property. Um, as Angela said, we approached Area Plan staff, uh, in December because we had an opportunity to develop, uh, 28, 29 acres, uh, of land north of Abbot Road, east of the bypass on the map that you see on, on the screen. Uh, for a user that's based here in South Bend, uh, that is growing, that they want to continue to do business in South Bend, um, we were, we took advantage of great process that the city has and the county for a project advisory team where, uh, county and city officials come together with the, uh, the petitioners, and we just talk about, uh, the issues that might be in play for an opportunity such as this. And what we learned was that, um, there was effectively a void of zoning at, at this time. The PUD that was approved in 2005 had expired, um, and the best course of action that would protect the city, uh, the petitioner, property owners, and residents would be to seek approval from Area Plan and the Council, uh, to rezone to LI, Light Industrial. Why? Because the uses that are permitted in that zone, uh, included virtually all of the uses that were contemplated in the PUD that was approved in 2005. The only real exception was that a hotel is not permitted in the current LI zone and was contemplated as part of the, uh, PUD at the time. I want to make it clear, too, that this is simply a petition to rezone the property to apply certain zoning standards. Uh, any approval by the Council would not be an automatic building permit. Uh, we're not able to show you on the ground tomorrow morning if we have zoning standards in place. Uh, another thing I want to make clear is that, and I think Angela just reiterated that, too, any action by the Council to rezone these 120 acres on the northeast quadrant does not automatically extend similar zoning to any of the other quadrants that were part of the petition. And if I just may, uh, move forward, you know, so, yeah, this is a map showing the entire, uh, Adams Road, St. Joe Valley Parkway intersection. The property we're seeking to rezone is the 120 acres in the northeast quadrant. Uh, the properties in the southeast quadrant have proceeded in recent years to be developed as envisioned by the PUD, but the lands in the northwest quadrant, uh, and the southwest quadrant, uh, would remain unchanged by any action that would be taken. Um, and in fact, the uses that were envisioned then included, uh, in the northwest quadrant, uh, single family, two family, multifamily, civic and recreational uses, lifestyle and destination retail. And the southwest quadrant, it was neighborhood retail, medical and office campus, and assisted living. The owner wouldn't have the right to develop it exactly that way either, because I think the same, uh, void exists. And then, with respect to, uh, concerns of traffic and safety at that intersection, uh, again, any action by this Council on the zoning, um, we still are obligated to prepare site plans, road improvement plans, and work with the city engineer to make sure the appropriate intersection controls are put in place, and that's dialogue that has to happen as well. We would entertain, in consideration of, uh, the comments we've heard from the public, the Q and A we've had with the Council, to, um, go through the POD, PUD process on the balance of the property beyond these 28 or 29 acres for the, um, initial user, um, and we'll be open to that dialogue.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna make that suggestion or motion.
Okay, well, let's hear the rest of the presentation, and we'll...
Unless they want to.
Yeah, I, I, at that point, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Jeff and Mr. Nordwist.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Nordwist. I live at, uh, seven, excuse me, 17530 Stony Point Drive in Granger. Uh, my wife is a waggoner, so Chet was my father-in-law. The property has been owned by Waggoner Dairy Farm for decades. It was originally purchased in 19, 1940s, 1948, somewhere in that neighborhood, and has been in the Chet Waggoner family ever since. Chet, like my wife Martha, and the rest of our entire family, have always been committed to betterment of the community, hence planned for the site. We were very happy to work with a local distributor, or a local developer, and the city in 2005 to come up with a master plan for the site, and that plan was to, uh, the vision of that site was to, uh, it was, it was a master plan for that particular site. It was referred to at that time as the Portage Prairie, and was, the plan was to, you know, further building growth, investment, and jobs for the city, which was very important, we thought. The rezoning at this time was in line with what we had originally, uh, with working with the city very closely at that time. Uh, the rezoning will permit the continuation of the property and the development of the, the site. Uh, from 2005 to today, we have worked very closely with local businesses, developers. We're about to continue doing that. The plan will continue to be the cornerstone of this project. And I'll have Jeff talk to you about the rest of it.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Smoke. I'm with, uh, 112 West Jefferson, I'm with Real Life Capital. We are the local developer, local owner of the project. Um, I won't repeat, um, what I said at the earlier committee meeting, but just want to touch on a couple of high points after a good meeting here, and some of the voters out there, um, can certainly understand some of the concerns and offer a few quick comments. Um, what we were asking for on the east side of US 31 has serial impact, as Brian said. The previous PUD zoning on the east side didn't, um, allow for LI such as the PUD, initial PUD zoning on the west side, so I know there was a concern about factories jumping over 31, and the original PUD provisions don't allow for that, so I just want to be clear that that's, that wasn't allowed originally in 2005. You know, when the city annexed this land back in 2005, they did not do that to make sure that it was the remainder of farm land. It was to be developed. Um, I also heard from many residents, they want more restaurants in these locations like Tuscon Park. We own Tuscon Park, and we'd love to do a development out there with retail and restaurants, but we need rooftops and, and more jobs out there to make that happen. So once there's more jobs and more homes out there, we would love to do restaurants and retail in that part of the city. Um, real quick, in regards to the actual tenant that's gonna be moving in there, it's not a 24-hour facility. Um, they have very limited truck traffic. It would be probably a tent of what FedEx sees right now, eight or nine trucks a day is what they've told me. Um, and I've also heard a lot about the traffic concerns, and we can bring, uh, city engineer to speak to those later. But we have, uh, discussed internally, uh, solution, a potential solution in order to help, um, proceed this along with the light zoning. We are willing to only proceed the light zoning, the 28 acres for this particular tenant, and then go through the PUD process for the balance of the acreage. Um, it is time since it mattered with the tenant. Um, we're concerned that, uh, if we wait, you know, three to five more weeks, it could, it could be too long, so, um, as a potential solution, we'd like to see if we could rezone the 28 acres to Light Industrial and go through the PUD process for the balance. That would be an option.
That concludes the presentation. Before we do any questions, I think, uh, Councilmember Scott wanted to make a motion?
Just one question clear. Would you consider a continuation on the entire project? Or just looking at zoning just the front end of it?
We would do the entire project.
Continuation?
Sure.
Make a motion to continue, um, sorry, Jeff? Uh, 7816 to February 13th.
That's not what I thought. Well, I, I agree with that, and so, I mean, I'm gonna say second, but that's not what I thought you were gonna say.
The entire project, the entire bill in front of us, 7816? Continued for two weeks.
Yeah, we, we would agree to that. I'd like, I'd like to hear if we could get the, if we could get the 20 acre zone tonight, that would be, that would be preferable, but it's more likely to...
So that isn't quite right. I don't think that's what he said, but I, I agree with your motion, though. But I just wanted to be fair to him.
We're, we're good with the two week, with the three week postponement for the whole project.
Cool. Amen.
Okay. Love my motions, too.
I have second that. Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, would the city clerk please read 0117?
0117. And just so, I apologize, just, just for clarification's sake, um, it, I, in, the developer requested a continuation, uh, on the bill. I imagine that is to work, continue to work with, uh, residents, um, on, uh, perhaps solution, so the bill will be continued for, uh, until February 13th.
And did we hear that again in committee, though? Or, because there's gonna be revisions, you're right?
There's gonna be revisions. I would like to say, if you want to call the developer, please call him, like you've done, and then that's the best thing to do, to get your points done, so we can be ready to move forward. Thank you.
With that, would the city clerk please read 0117?
0117. Public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. The first North South Alley from the south right of way of the, of West Sherwood Avenue, a distance of 255 feet and width of 14, west of South Michigan Street and east of South Main Street.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, there is. Uh, we looked at that earlier this after, or later this afternoon, and it gave, uh, we gave it a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Maurice McGee, representing Cobb Funeral Home at 3525 South Michigan.
Hey, could you please shut the door? Sorry.
One, one point in order. Uh, Karema?
Yeah.
Uh, I was informed that the audio isn't working to probably the WNIPE stream.
Sorry. All right. Please proceed.
Good evening, honorable council members. Maurice McGee, representing Cobb Funeral Home at 3525 South Michigan.
Hey, could you please shut the door? Sorry.
With me is, uh, the owner-director, Mr. Roosevelt Cobb. We're seeking to have the alley vacated abutting our, the west end of our lot, uh, between South Michigan and South Main, Grand Carol. Requesting that so we can construct a garage just to hold our service vehicles, um, as mentioned in the committee earlier. I'm not gonna go into much of that anymore, but I do, I think it's an important thing to note. The one opposition that we had was from an employee of the church that is directly south of us. What's important to note is that, uh, both that church and...
As a minority business, we always understand that there's minorities are not given consideration, so I would prudently hope that you would give this bill consideration and pass it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else, anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
My name is Tom Forst, and I am a deacon at the church. I am not an employee of the church.
What's, what's the address?
I live in Niles, Michigan.
Your address.
I just, yeah, I'm in charge of the buildings and grounds of that church.
Sir, I apologize. Everyone needs to state their name and address.
That's me. My, my statement was...
Would you state the address of the church?
Yep.
Or your home address?
As soon as I remember it.
Yeah, or your home address, any, any address.
2581 Lake Shore Drive in Niles, Michigan.
One address. Thank you.
And I'm just, I'm a deacon there, and I take care of the buildings and grounds, and I have not been informed by my pastor that he had made that phone call, so I would have to doubt that, because I was told to come to the meeting. So I don't know, in opposition, that's why I'm considering that as a reason. Now, my question is, after the meeting this afternoon, will there be egress for me to come out that existing alley after you terminate, or open it up? That's my question, because we need the egress. We've already been hit by the city's, half of our egress for our church was taken away with the restriction taken. And now you're gonna take another one away from us, we're getting a little bit punchy about what's happening with the city, and what are we doing to the city to get them to, or kick off it, or something, that they're taking all our egress away. And it's a church. It's not like it's anything else, you know? So I wanna know if we will still be able to use that alley with no restrictions or not? If that, that would, because we've lost, I guess, half of our exits. Took way to two on Chippewa, took away one on the south side of Michigan Street, or Main Street, and so we were, and we had to rechange our whole church run because of that. Now we're gonna have, it's more stuff. I don't know what we can do unless you're gonna, let us put a house cop pad in and bring him in that way, we're not sure how we're gonna do that. So I wish you'd like to know what's going on.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the petitioners, five minutes for rebuttal.
Just so we're clear. The church is here. I can't even imagine how many, where it put a parking lot they had, with an exit under Sherwood and an exit under South Main. This is our building, our line that busts this alley. At some point, whether it was the church or the previous owners, they had this part of the alley already vacant. They have an exit that goes to Michigan Street, which, which is no problem, I'm sorry. So there's no problem going north or south. In addition to that, across the street from us is a school. There's a fast downhill rise at 25 miles an hour. We have no difficulty getting out, even with a few. This house that is sitting up here on this hill, that is separate from the church these people have, has been abandoned for 10 years. There hasn't even been anyone coming down from this house, down this alley to the street. Again, as I needed, I mentioned in the earlier committee meeting, from Sherwood, the only people that use this alley are people attending funeral services, because they believe it's part of our family, because we've maintained it for 18 years.
Please, I'd like to call out, please state your address as well, sir.
My address, Roosevelt Cobb, I'm at 3525 South Michigan Street, South Bend. As far as the deacons concerned about egress, I think it was pointed out earlier, as well as in our application, that we have no desire to block this property. This is essentially a driveway that gives us access to and from the west side of our parking lot. That's all. Once we get the garage constructed, that prop, that alley will still be every inch as wide as it is today. We are throwing no barriers anywhere. The only concern, I mean, I don't have a power of concern about that, given that the house is located next to us, I suppose they have the right to block that off to keep me from going to them. But I would have no desire, any reason to block my own driveway to get in and out of that building. Additionally, this is church property, but it is not the church property. It's just a house that the church purchased about 15 years ago, used it for a seminary for a while, let it go. So as far as what they have lost as a result of smart streets has nothing to do with this. It's red area, nothing to do with this. This will remain open, checked by application, no desire blocking, none whatsoever.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, any recommendations from council? Move to send 0117 to the full council favor room. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I apologize, sir. I apologize, sir. Public hearing is closed. Would the city clerk please read 0517?
0517. Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the city of South Bend, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2017, Eddie Street Phase Two, and the principal amount not to exceed $25 million, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Oh, yes, is there a committee report? The community investment committee met last meeting, and we sent this forward favor. With that, is there a present? Please state your name and address.
Brian Plasky, Community Investment Department, office on the 14th floor of this building. This is the one we kinda did step to the block. More to follow hopefully on that. I think, once we all remember that that's what we're doing, we can keep, keep the momentum going. Just quickly say, no changes since the committee discussion. I know that the developers have been working very diligently with APC staff to make sure that everything is in the right ballpark there. That's all going very well. I would report to purify handle if I'm making stuff up, but that's going very well. So as I mentioned in committee, overall, this is a $150 million investment as a continuation of Phase One of Eddie Street. There are no upfront city tax dollars involved and no tax backup as there was on the previous first version. It made sense on the first version at that time, given what had been there previously, but I think in this case, we were comfortable saying that it's certainly not the direction we wanted to head now. So what does that mean? That means that this is a project that truly pays for itself, meaning that as a project gets built and then it is assessed, it will pay for the debt service that is required for these bonds. So the monies don't exist now. They will upon successful completion of the buildings and the assessment. The numbers that we have ballparked for their assessment, done by Crowe in partnership with the city, tell us a pretty good story about debt coverage and some other things that we were very happy to see. 431 new apartment units overall in the entirety of the plan, 16 residential and flex. And if you remember, as I mentioned last time, that's kind of a live-work arrangement. The example I used was Consuela Hopkins was on our EDC board and mentioned that a business like hers, small local business, wanted to expand and didn't need a big place, could kinda utilize something small like this in a totally different market area where they might be able to garner some more business. So that's, that was an exciting story that a lot of the small businesses were eager to see. 18 townhomes bordering Georgiana, so where kinda the residential feel is now, where the triangle neighborhood is, right across the street from that. Public green space is part of the overall development. It's not private green space for the Eddie Street residents or anything like that. It's completely open to the public and privately maintained as well. And I think the big thing is newly constructed and doubled in size Robinson Community Learning Center. I mean, I imagine many of us have been there for various events and functions. Truly remarkable facility, great partners, they do a ton of work in the community, and I think we're all very excited to see that come to fruition. And then neighborhood lots for affordable housing. What we did here was something we had not done previously, and I know in conversations with many council members, there was a question about new development coming to town, how we might work in affordable housing components in various forms to those types of projects. And so what we did was had conversations with the developer and other partners involved in the project, basically figured out ways to have some lots within the broader neighborhood of Eddie Street, all the way over to St. Pierre, et cetera, and have lots at the Southern Heritage Foundation, who does work in this area on Hill Street most prominently, and is a really solid partner of the NNRO. The work that they do, they can continue to do with lots that they wouldn't have to expend any cost acquiring. So we thought that that was a good thing to work into the agreement as well. I would remind council that in addition to the very good committee meeting we had, this is a project that comes to you with favorable recommendations, or I should say approvals, from the Economic Development Commission, a member of which is here this evening, and I hope will share her thoughts, as well as the redevelopment commission of some of those members who are involved in here. So this is the final step. After this, what would happen is that we would go work with the private partner to go secure and go out for these bonds and see what kind of successful understrakes we could have. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gabbett from Kite.
Hello, Matt Gabbett, Kite Realty Group, 30 South, Oregon, Indianapolis, Indiana. Thank you, council members, and I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this plan. We've talked about it a lot, it's been in the press. I just wanna point out a few things. Number one, you know, we've, we've worked hard in developing this plan in conjunction with the city, in conjunction with the university, to really try to fit well into the neighborhood. We've tried to limit the amount of surface parking that is visible to the residents. We've also, we've also reached out, we've also reached out to the neighborhood communities, the residents, the various neighborhood organizations. We've had two separate meetings, and, you know, we, we received a lot of really good feedback in terms of concerns, thoughts that they've had. Two of those concerns being Quigley, the extension of Quigley into the triangle. I'm happy to say we've worked out a way that we do not have, Quigley will not extend through the triangle, so the concerns about traffic, that has been mitigated. And then also setbacks along Georgiana. Happy to say that we've worked out a way, and it's in our zoning application, that we will have 10-foot setbacks from the sidewalks to the buildings. So, you know, this plan, Brian described it, we have underground parking facilities. As you know, those facilities, those facilities are necessary for the density of the project to create the dense, walkable urban feel that we have with Phase One, and would like to continue south on Phase Two. And we're really proud of a lot of the features here, including the public green space, and as Brian mentioned, the newly expanded Robinson Center. So I'm happy to take any questions that council may have at this time.
Any questions for council? Any questions from council? We'll save comments for after the presentation, and I'll make sure to reserve that.
With regard to the financing, I wanted to make clear, and I wanted to restate comments I made at the committee meeting two weeks ago. First of all, I think it's important to note for the record that a significant portion of that $25 million is going in support of the hotel, which is not listed on here as part of the I O B, in fact, it is. And the second thing, and I'm sure you've heard me say this, the expectation of the bond issue would be about $1.3 million per year, and you're expecting perhaps as much as $2 million a year in revenue. As you know, and frequently mentioned, is the quote fiscal plan that we are looking forward to. I think it's important that at some point in time, we begin to look at whether these TIF districts have surpluses, repatriating some of that money for the benefit. I know you have to pay the bond issue, but I would hope that we don't limit ourselves to use it simply within this TIF district for this surplus of $700,000. I think it's a good time to get started on it, since we're pretty comfortable it's gonna be there, and I hope we have some more discussions on that in the future.
No, I just wanna comment to the council members, if you could move the microphone closer, even for here, it was a little hard for me to hear, I think, out farther, so.
More speak up, appreciate it. Seeing no other questions from council, move to the public portion.
Did you want me to?
I did. Just that you recognize, you recognize it.
Sure. And I think, you know, you've made this conversation not only accountable as well as redevelopment commission, and I think without force having too much, I would say, you know, the purpose of TIFs is, this council knows, you know, in or serving is a good way to describe those things, and I think with a lot of the projects you saw get done in the latter half of 2016 in River East TIF, there's a bit more additional pressure on that TIF now, so we're gonna be looking for all the exits we can find, and I think to do those projects, not just within the space that we're talking about here, but outside of it, encompassing it and serving it, are definitely very, very high on our priority list as well.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we'll move to the public portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
My name is Marguerite Taylor, and I live at 714 East Corby, and I am that person on the Economic Development Committee. But before I go into that, I just wanna give you a little background. I belong to the Southern Heritage Board of Directors, the Northeast Neighborhood Council, the NNRO, and I work at the Robinson Center, which gives me a really good perspective of what's going on in the neighborhood. We've had, I watched Eddie Street One divide the neighborhood, and people were saying, "You're killing the deer that's in the Notre Dame woods." Really, what was in the Notre Dame woods was skunks and raccoons and rats, that's what was there. But what we've seen come out of that is kids walking, bicycling, people. I don't think something ever was considered a college town. I've been to Ann Arbor and Pittsburgh, they have large colleges. Something never was that. Eddie Street gives us the feel of you're in a college town, and I like it. I like seeing people walk. But all of the boards that I sit on, including the Northeast Neighborhood Council, which by the way is the oldest continuing neighborhood association in the city, it's out there, voted unanimously to approve this, the NNRO, and someone will speak about that, they put the vote to also approve it, and I hope that you give it your blessing. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move back to the council, I know some council members had comments.
I just wanna thank the gentleman from Kite and all those who are part of the development team for taking time to talk to their neighbors. Over the last few situations, I've been trying to emphasize that more and more when it comes down to zoning issues and all this, because I think that really helps clear up a lot of the things before we even get to this council, and it makes development grow in a stronger and a better way. So thank you for when you said you meant... on the Economic Development Committee. But before I go into that, I just want to give you a little background. I belong to the South Bend Heritage Board of Directors, the Northeast Neighborhood Council, the NNRO, and I work at the Robinson Center, which gives me a really good perspective of what's going on in the neighborhood. We've had, I watched Eddie Street 1 divide the neighborhood, and people were saying, "You're killing the deer that's in the Notre Dame Woods." Really, what was in the Notre Dame Woods was skunks and raccoons and rats. That's what was there. But what we've seen come out of that is kids walking, bicycling, people. I don't think South Bend ever was considered a college town. I've been to Ann Arbor and Pittsburgh, that have large colleges. South Bend never was that. Eddie Street gives us the feel of you're in a college town, and I like it. I like seeing people walk. But all of the boards that I sit on, including the Northeast Neighborhood Council, which by the way is the oldest continuing neighborhood association in the city, it's out there, voted unanimously to approve this, the NNRO, and someone will speak about that, they put the vote to also approve it. And I hope that you give it your blessing. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move back to the council. I know some council members had comments.
Yes? I just want to thank the gentleman from Kite and all those who are part of the development team for taking time to talk to their neighbors. Over the last few situations, I've been trying to emphasize that more and more when it comes down to zoning issues and others, because I think that really helps clear up a lot of the things before we even get to this council, and it makes development grow in a stronger and a better way. So, thank you for when you said you met with them, that tonight, that's something that's really close to my heart, so thank you.
I also wanted to extend a thank you to the Department of Community Investment and also the developer. One of the things that y'all know, I'm always talking about affordable housing, and so it's great to see that you've taken the initiative to begin that process and say, "You know what? We really are going to live up to these values of mixed-income neighborhoods, and we're going to build it right into the plan." So, I want to thank you, and thank you, and thank everybody, just what I'm talking about.
With that, is there a motion from council?
Big motion to sign 0517 to the full council, favorable.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion carries. City Clerk, would you please read 0617?
Are we going to?
We just have a paper copy.
Okay.
I had 0517 before 0617.
You do on third reading.
It's okay.
The committee is holding.
There it is.
It's okay.
Yep, okay. I will entertain a motion to rise and resolve from the committee.
So, mover.
Wait.
Would you please read 0617?
Public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, reaffirming ordinance 100461-16 for customers outside of the city's corporate boundary.
Is there a representative? Please state your name and address. No committee report, please.
Utilities committee had a public hearing on 0617 this afternoon, and it comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Representative, please state your name and address.
Michael Schmidt, Assistant City Attorney for the city of South Bend, 12th floor of the county city building here in South Bend. We come before council today to ask for the, for the council to reaffirm ordinance 100461-16 that was passed in its full back in October of 2016. That ordinance, if you may recall, dealt with what we call system development charges. It removed compact fees and replaced them with a surcharge of 14%. What we've got here in front of you is the exact same language of 100461-16, but for you is just as it relates to wastewater fees related for users outside of the corporate boundary of the city. With all the best intentions, it was missed that we need to hold a public hearing and give the users outside our corporate boundaries a chance to present their case as it relates to any fee change, the surcharge, and the system development charge related to wastewater would certainly constitute a change in fees. So, at this time, we ask that we hold a public hearing, and we appreciate council doing so, and we also ask that we move forward with the confirming of 100461-16 as it relates just to fees for users outside the corporate boundary. As I, I think I spoke earlier, all of the rest of the ordinance that you passed in October is in effect, so the system development charges and whatnot for water users are active, and that has been applied. And so, we're moving forward on that end. It's just this one particular piece that remains outstanding at this time. Without the support of council, we run the risk of having to go back, and if you recall, the cumbersome nature of compact fees, of having to open that back up and try to figure out how to pursue compact fees against all of the customers that are out there. I don't think that's an approach that the city wants, and we hope this approach that council does not want at this time. So, with that being said, we would like to give the opportunity to all of the members of, all of the customers who are outside of our district, our corporate boundaries, to present their concerns about the ordinance to council. Open up to any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
So, all, just on the record, all of the members who are outside of the boundaries have been officially notified.
Correct.
So, no one can say after tonight that they were not notified, anything on the council. So, could you elaborate on that a little bit more to make sure that that be a single person outside of this whole? Could you talk about how do you notify them, what have you, what was done, so we can go on the record to make sure that they were covered?
Sure. The process essentially, the statute requires a 10-day period after the notice is sent before we can have this particular hearing. So, I believe it was January 11th or 12th, I believe that the notices went out. I, for one, in my particular position, had them send me a notice just so that I knew that the process was working. I believe Director of Public Works, Derek Borlaugh, also had a notice sent to him. We do have customers here today who have responded. I know council staff has been contacted with questions about this, so there's a lot of positive evidence out there to suggest that the notices were successful. We took the list of customers as of a certain date, so it was early January, January 10, January 11. We had to certify that this was the active list of outside customers, and that all of these people were receiving the notices that were on this list, that they were going to have the notices in the mail. And so, and that certification.
All that's been done, so I thank you for sharing that, explaining that for the record.
Any other questions from council?
I guess, if I may, can you just run me through this in terms of how this will then actually work? If we pass this tonight, when will people be expected to pay on this new, in this new way? And then, what would the process be for any special exceptions relative to them?
Sure, that's an excellent point. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll start with just a little bit of a refresher of what the actual ordinance says. We have a scale up, so the surcharge that was proposed in the ordinance and voted on back in October was 14%. This came upon recommendation of outside council. It also came upon recommendation of other communities in the state and through guidance of IURC, which said basically, keep it under 15%. So, we went to 14%. There's a ramp up provision, so the first year, 2017, would be 5%, 2018 would be an additional 5%, and then in 2019, additional 4% to get to that 14%, then it would be 14% thereafter. The city ordinance, section 17-29, addresses what is called a private user, a private use agreement. It allows for the city, through its Board of Public Works, to negotiate with particular customers for a special rate. It places the burden on the customer to financially justify the reduced rate that they would be receiving. There's no formal policy in place as to what particular elements would be used to justify such a special rate, but, you know, it sort of passes the smell test. Once it passes the smell test and we see the financial justification of the customers, public works and that particular customer would enter into an agreement. It would then bring that agreement after passage by the Board of Public Works to council and asking for a council to pass and agree to such a rate by action of a resolution. Part of the rules of 1729 does, do require yearly check-ins with council to sort of confirm that the numbers that were presented in the special rate agreement were true, that the impact is true, that it's ongoing. So, there's an opportunity for a real solid check and balance to the system there that keeps council in the loop of anybody receiving a special rate. That's sort of the beauty of 1729.
That doesn't preclude multiple-year agreements, though, by the petitioner?
No, and in fact, probably, multiple-year agreements are probably appropriate. However, that doesn't mean that they would be, they would still have to come in front of council, and there could be all kinds of unique language in the agreement that, you know, would place the burden again on that applicant to make that justification to council, so that council has the reassurances that the special rate is justified.
Thank you.
I think from what we spoke this afternoon with Mr. Schmidt, the sense was that, the sense was that the council would have the final say on the approval, not the Board of Public Works.
Absolutely.
I want you to make that clear.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing can be done without council, and that also includes Dr. Varner, modifications, extensions. The buck stops with council on the agreement. But it does sort of push the burden back on Board of Public Works and the customer to sort of come to a, to put all the facts together, to come with the agreement, to have that all prepared for the benefit of council beforehand.
Thank you. Do we need to add more of that to the policy? You said regarding the special exception, you said it doesn't, as long as it passes the smell test, it's okay. But do we need to have more teeth so it can pass the teeth test?
I think, I think for my own benefit, I think that whenever you've got some guidelines to build off of, it allows you to be more transparent with the customers, it allows you to be more transparent with public works and to hold people accountable for the deal, so people know how to approach the board and say, "This is why," instead of just every customer coming out and saying, "I think I deserve this."
Would you initiate that, or would we have to initiate that, or what would be the direction?
It would be appropriate for the city to initiate that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address, and Councilmember Kelly will time you. You have five minutes.
My name is Tom Kaya. I live at 1803 Huckers Street Drive in Mounds, Michigan. I am the president of Ion Tech Ion Coat, and I would just like to go on record that we oppose this ordinance. Thank you. Mr. Nussbaum would articulate our position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I provided the council at the committee meeting some information.
Sorry, if you're not, your name and address.
I did that the last time, too, didn't I?
Yeah, pretty much.
Richard A. Nussbaum, 225 South Sunnyside, South Bend, Indiana. My office is there at 210 South Michigan, 5th floor, South Bend, Indiana. I provided the council with some information, hopefully that's helpful in helping to speed up the process, because I know we've limited time. But I, as Mr. Kaya mentioned, I'm here on behalf of Ion Tech Ion Coat, which is a joint venture originally of Inland Steel and now of Arcelor Mittal, which is a European company, and Nippon Steel, which is a Japanese company. So, we have foreign companies that are doing business in our country that are employing our people and are doing so at a very high rate. The plant's been in operation since 1990. In 1987, there was a New Carlyle Economic Development Area established by San Joseph County, which allowed for a TIP district to pay for all of the infrastructure. So, the wastewater that is coming from this area, from the Ion Tech Ion Coat plant to the wastewater treatment plant is through a conduit that was not paid for by the city of South Bend, was paid for basically by Ion Tech Ion Coat with the taxes that they paid that went towards the TIP bonds. The plant was located on a rural greenfield because it couldn't be located within the city of South Bend. So, this is not a situation where someone is trying to void taxes from the city by locating out of the county. This was something that had to be located out of the county. It was really way ahead of its time in the sense of regional development, because the city was involved in terms of providing its wastewater treatment plant at a very favorable rate with all of the other partners, the county and New Carlyle and the private sector, to make this all happen. And that was back in 1987. The plant now employs 520 employees, and many of these employees are South Bend residents. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, I looked at the vendor list, over 200 businesses within the city of South Bend benefit from business that they do with this plant. As mentioned earlier, the wastewater that comes from the Ion Tech Ion Coat plant goes through a dedicated conduit, which means that that's the only thing that passes. And there's nothing that goes out of it, nothing that goes into it, until it reaches the wastewater treatment plant. So, it does not contribute to the combined sewer overflow issue. So, when people come to Councilmember Kelly in my neighborhood and are upset with flooding in their basements because of those kinds of issues, it is not caused by the Ion Tech Ion Coat plant. This plant actually is considered to be the premier plant among the Arcelor Mittal system, and they have global facilities. And within Indiana, there are 10,000 employees in other plants throughout the state. Its customers are the automotive and appliance industries, so this is something that goes back many, many years in South Bend in terms of the kinds of manufacturing jobs that we have. And as I mentioned earlier, these are very high-paying jobs. The sewer rate paid by Ion Tech Ion Coat is the largest of any other customer, inside or outside the city. The increase in rates have been over $1 million since 2010. It's about $1.4 million in 2010, it's $2.4 million now. Based on the latest sewer rate study, and that was the sewer rate study that the city produced, we're using city numbers here, we're not using numbers that we produced. The operational revenues for the wastewater treatment plant for 2016 is projected to be $35 million. Of that $35 million, $11 million was allocated towards debt service to take care of the combined sewer overflow, which is roughly 31%, 32% of the rate. None of that, so everyone's rate, that percentage is in there. And the rate that Ion Tech Ion Coat pays, it's in there. But Ion Tech Ion Coat does not contribute to that issue. There was also $3.5 million that was allocated of that $35 million for pilot payment of the taxes, so that of the rate payers paying into the wastewater treatment plant, about $3.5 million goes towards the city's budget to help pay for other services, police fire, roads.
30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay. This current ordinance is not fair. And as I mentioned earlier, if it's passed this evening, there's really no, nothing that Ion Tech Ion Coat can do other than can test the ordinance, and that would apply not only to Ion Tech Ion Coat, but to everyone. We don't find, you know, there's, there are things that we have to do to prove our special rate, and we feel that we can do that, but there's also, the council has to show the reason for this surcharge. And to take, there's really not been any reason articulated, other than that these customers are outside the city limits. And you have your lawyer who can advise you, Aladine's excellent lawyer, but from our perspective, that's not enough. And so, we think we would ask for an additional 30 days so that we can continue our discussions with the city and hopefully work out an arrangement that will at least assist Ion Coat, so they can continue their good business here in this community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name's Carl Schultz, and I live at 53555 Hoppy Road, and as a resident, that I believe is actually hooked into the same line that comes from Ion Tech, it goes to the wastewater treatment plant. And just when I, the only reason I came down is because I did get this notice. I don't really watch sewage issues and stuff, you know, on a very regular basis, but I did get this notice, and, you know, once again, I felt kind of the same way. I think that I'm hearing them talk about it purely because I'm outside the city. We currently have a rate of over $50 a month, $600 a year. And my thought is that rate's even scheduled to go higher. We, there's two of us, two retired people living in this home, and getting up towards $1,000 a year just for sewage, no water involved or anything, just seems a little exorbitant. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to come down and kind of, you know, express my concern about that. The other thing is, living where we live, I don't, do we have any representation that is involved in the decisions on these rates? It's purely a city decision, correct? You know, so we don't feel like we even have any representation. As primary caregiver for my mother, who lives inside the city limits, and I can see how much more we're paying than she is, simply because she's inside the city limits. So, I just feel like we need a little bit of relief on... So I just feel like we need a little bit of relief on sewer. The other thing is, you know, I might just mention, you know, just retired from Honeywell, you know, a year ago. And we're making the decision on where to live in retirement. And things like this aren't really positive factor for, you know, feeling like you're living in a very expensive place to retire. Thank you.
My name is Mary Rainey. I live at 52752 East Cypress Circle in South Bend, and that's in Green Bar subdivision in Clay Township. And we've lived here 33 years and this is the first time I've come to a meeting, but I'm glad I did. I don't, I oppose any kind of increase because we're retired. But what I am opposing here, and I think the council should know, is that there are certain programs and benefits that cities, water and sewer customers get that county does not get. And the one thing I'm mostly concerned about right now is we had extensive, I mean, like thousands of dollars worth of sewage backup in our home on August 15th and 16th. And we have contacted the water company and the attorney, the city attorney's office on several occasions. We want a 50/50 program for the preventer valve, which is the only thing they said will keep this from happening again. And they will not include us because we are outside the city limits. If we are going to be targeted for a special increase because we're outside the city limits, we should be included in anything a city sewer customer gets too. So I wasn't sure that the council knew that we were exempted on some things. Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I just want to be clear on this. So this is affecting residential customers and commercial customers who are outside the city, but we also raised rates at some point on the people within the city? Do we do that also? And what kind of legal ramifications are there to say, hey, we're going to pass this ordinance and we're going to charge you 14%, but if you come in here and cry and tell me that you don't have enough money, I'll only charge you 5%? That's not, that's not right. I can't even imagine that that would pass a smell test, as this young man said, in a court of law.
Please address the council.
I'm addressing you. That, that's crazy. That's like telling you, Gavin, you can walk into the grocery store and I'm going to buy five pounds of cheese and I'm going to pay $22 for it, but since you come in and you might make a little more money to me, that same five pounds of cheese is going to cost you $50. And you would cry and throw a fit over that. You can't pass an ordinance and say, we're going to raise your rate 14% and then say, well, if you can't afford it, you come in here and give me a good reason. And we will decide whether your reason is good enough by a smell test on whether we reduce your rates. That's not fair, man. That's what's wrong with our government right now. Too many big businesses in other places are getting the breaks and the taxpayers, we got it on our backs. So I think I really think, long and hard before you pass something where you're going to charge one person one thing and somebody else another thing. It seems to happen an awful lot here in South Bend.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address.
Corey Demilliner, 3902 Cottage Avenue, Mississauga, Indiana. I'm with Gateway Hospitality Corporation, representing two hotels affected by this possibility. And my, my opposition is much more simplistic in the fact that the notice was delivered to my organization's January 13th. However, budgets for my operations were approved in November of 2016. While this increase could affect us to the sum of roughly $7,000 a year, that $7,000 would eliminate the possibility of team members receiving bonus on a yearly basis. So the staff members at our hotels are given an opportunity to earn a percentage of their annual salary based on meeting their financial obligations. And if this would be approved, let me just go back, 2016, they received that by a mere $122. So this addition of $7,000 would eliminate that possibility for them, which of course is an economic value to South Bend, given the fact that they turn around and spend their money in the city. Those bonuses are given to all hourly and salary team members. So my housekeeping attendant who makes $25,000 a year and gets to come home with $1,000 extra won't have that next year because they don't have the increased budget. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in opposition, we'll turn it back to the petitioner. You have five minutes for rebuttal. Councilmember Kelly will keep track of time.
Thank you, Councilmember. I know, again, we've started to be here for a long time on this, but I want to reiterate that we appreciate the customers who did show up here today to voice their concerns over this. I want to remind council that if action is not taken here, we would probably have to look into going back to the compact fees. And what many of our customers may not understand or have not heard is that the compact fee would be worse financially on their operation than what the surcharge would be. Now, I can't say that definitively exists for all customers. I think that in conversations I've had with IONTECH and IONCOAT, that may not be the place. But the overwhelming majority of the customers would have increased costs if the compact fee system that would be in place if council cannot take, take action on this went into effect. So again, we ask that, again, I'm open to any questions, but we ask for council to close the public hearing, move forward with the reaffirmation of 10461-16, and allow us to move forward on this, allow us to use the power that exists under 1729 to negotiate with our customers that have legitimate justifications for special rates and move forward as the city of South Bend on this matter.
With that, we'll open it up to comments and questions from council members. Dr. Varner, you'd like to?
The, I think that the question which Mr. Jesse adds probably should be addressed with regards to where does this authority come from? The council didn't make up this request. The request for the 14% increase, which we then made, phased in through our action, comes as a result of researched, whether it was research statutory authority or court cases or something. This wasn't just a made up. So can you address what that authority is so that the public has an idea that, no, this didn't just come as a request out of nowhere, it came as a result of?
Sure. I mean, as with anything, whenever we conduct a study, we reach out to our financial advisors. In this particular case, it was Umbaugh Associates. They look at our complete system, they look at our revenues, they look at our operating expenses, they look at the number of customers, and they figure out where the rates need to, need to sit.
But did they examine statutory authority as opposed to just financial?
I'm sorry?
Did they, did they examine statutory authority as a basis going forward for their financial assessment?
Well, Umbaugh in itself would have reviewed the statutory. I mean, we use outside counsel, Barnes and Torneberg, in-house counsel reviewing. It is the authority of the city to propose rate increases. All the rate increases then get vested and voted on by council. We provide the data for the justification for the rate increases. And then, you know, with some, you know, with water, for instance, you've got to go down and get approval from the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. It's an extensive process. With wastewater, it's a little bit different. The final say determiner is council on rates. And again, we did perform studies to determine that the 14% was a defensible position in the state of Indiana for a surcharge. And as I, and I mentioned earlier, that 14% is a, it's actually would be a cost savings compared to the compact fees that we are trying to replace.
And would you, have you made that available, that research available to either the IONTECH people or?
Yeah, they performed an APRA request and we've provided them with the data. And frankly, we've had a fair amount of give and take. We've tried to be as helpful and cooperative as possible with Mr. Nussbaum's request. We both have a shared interest in trying to get this right.
In that shared interest, how can we assure our people of South Bend that when the, or even not only of South Bend, but those who are seeking or being provided our water, that when customer A says that they need a special exception and customer B wants a special exception, that there would be done on a sane, fair process and not customer A get an advantage over customer D because they like people in the city or don't like people in the city or maybe there's a large money here or whatever? How can we keep it from not being shady? Well, that's because I think that was the point that was made there, that this person gives this one, but this one doesn't give that. Back to the whole reason why I thought that there may be needs to have more teeth in that, above exception, because it can give the appearance that certain people get certain rates and certain organizations get certain things. And then the second follow-up on that is who then will determine the rates? Would that be just you? Would that be just Mr. Horvath? Would that be just the mayor? Who makes that, who makes that final decision?
I think the first, to answer your first question, it's, it's the power of transparency. Any, any contract that is entered into by the city is going to be available for anybody to review. And if somebody sees a pathway of how one individual customer received a special rate, and if that circumstance applies to them, then it comes down to equity and doing the right thing. And that would be to, you know, apply the same conditions that went for one customer to another customer. Now, if they're different conditions, that requires someone to be treated differently and judged differently. I think that the ultimate decision-making comes down to, you know, hey, is there financial justification for this particular rate savings? You know, can our financial experts review the documents and the evidence put forward by a customer and say, yeah, this is legitimate and this is entitled to X amount of savings? You know, based upon their, their argument? And then you move forward on it. And all of that becomes very transparent.
And the, and the person who would then, for the public record, who would make that final call, who, who, who does that?
So it would, it would go through the public works. And so.
Which is a public meeting?
Exactly. With, you know, you've got the agendas published, you've got gender review session before a matter gets voted on, then you have the actual meeting where it takes, where it takes formal action. And then it would come through, I'm presuming, three readings of council as well. You'd have the initial time to be on there for a first reading, there'd be a committee hearing.
So the special exception would come back to us then after you go to public?
Absolutely.
So would they then two public bodies?
Correct.
The Board of Public Works and the City Council to make that recommendation? Is that not correct?
Absolutely. You're correct.
Okay, so it's just not arbitrarily just done, so person A gets it and person B gets it and they walk out the room with it?
The beauty of what, of how you guys drafted 1729 and how that impacts the city of South Bend is that it has to go through all of these public works, it has, it has to go through council, it has to be transparent, and it gives the public the opportunity to see how it was done for somebody, to see if it applies to them, and to move forward with the potential special rate.
Appreciate it. Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I, Mr. Nussbaum, if you could answer a question. I'm not sure why I appreciate the fact that you need 30 days if there is an appeal or a negotiating process built into the ordinance.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. Do we take questions? I don't know if we question the members of the public at this time. Is it?
I think you may question Mr. Nussbaum since he's a scientific monster.
Okay. We got questions, please, by the mic here. Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, you can address. I apologize.
As you can see, there are a lot of hoops to go through before you can get a special rate, as it should be. I'm not arguing with the process. But there's no guarantee at this point that IONTECH IONCOAT or anyone else is going to get that. So there is a process of doubt there. But we have a very limited amount of time to contest the ordinance. So we have to get that on record while we're, while we're talking, which is why, to avoid that, I suggested that we keep the public hearing open. Let's see how far we can get with, with the contract, as far as IONTECH IONCOAT is concerned. And that way, there isn't a lawsuit. I would also just, Michael's been very helpful, all right? We've had a very constructive, constructive discussion. But I would, I think it's important for the council to know that there has not been a study with regard to the surcharge. There have been a lot of other studies. There's a system development charge in the ordinance, there's a rate study. The rate study, that's where I got the information. But as far as this 5, 10, 14% surcharge, there is no study. And that, that's not good for the city in litigation. What, what, what Michael was saying is, is that he got a legal opinion that permits this council to assess this surcharge up to 14% without it having to go to the IURC. But the council still has to have a reasonable basis for the, for the charges to be just, reasonable, non-discriminatory. I think there's a problem there. And so I'm just, and I don't want it to be any surprise down the road, but that's one of the reasons why I think we should have additional discussion.
Can I have one more question? Are you suggesting then that there shouldn't be any differentiation between inside and outside the city for?
Not on the basis of the record there is right now. There hasn't been any, any.
So in the next 30 days, your appeal, if I can infer that you'll be asking for no differentiation at all?
We're going to object to the ordinance. Without the ordinance, there, there isn't a differentiation. So as, as the record stands right now, there should not be a differentiation. In fact, with regard to IONTECH IONCOAT, we're paying far more than we should be paying. We're not saying at the end of the day the contract will end up being any different, but I think that's what the record's going to show.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
It seems so much simpler in committee. So one of the things that we asked about was like, can you give an example? Like, how do you, you know, we talked about this before, I think it's good for people to hear that. Like, how do you determine, like, what would be an argument for, I don't have to pay as much as everybody else? And then I have another question after that.
Sure. I think that it's really, what you want to avoid is too much of a case-by-case basis. But I mean, things off the top of my head, you look at, you know, are there pre-treatment facilities? Is there, does the, does the organization do any type of pre-treatment so that the wastewater that the city's receiving, it doesn't have to spend to dedicate as much resources to? Is there a dedicated line that doesn't interfere with, or that doesn't impact the combined sewer? It really, we're open to a variety of issues. You know, we're open to working with IONTECH and other potential customers. But we want to, we want to be able to verify before we come to council that this is legitimate. We don't want to bring something to you and ask for a special rate when we can't verify the numbers ourselves.
So when you, when you shared that earlier, it felt to me like, oh, okay, well, there's not going to be that many people or that many organizations or businesses that would probably even apply for this or would qualify for this. However, especially after hearing tonight, some of the other folks coming, and I don't know, their circumstances into, you know, they're outside the city, where their sewer lines go into, and one gentleman talks about his go into the same thing that IONTECH goes into. Are we looking at like potentially hundreds of people? Like, first, first problem is, it sounds to me, I'm afraid that if we pass this, we'll have like 80 billion people coming and going through this process of 1729 to try to get an exception. The second problem though is, if we don't, then I'm left to wonder, is it simply because of an issue of access? Like, people just don't know. Their, their rates go up, they don't really know why, even though they might have, if they had the information, they might actually qualify, but they don't know it. You see what I'm saying? And so then that, to me, sets up a situation where it's inequitable. You know what I mean? How do you avoid those things?
Well, I think, and please correct me if I, if I don't answer all of your questions, but I think that the first thing is, it is up, it is up to the customer to pursue a special rate. They have to be able to justify it to the Board of Public Works. You can't just come up and say, hey, I think I'm entitled to, that's not going to make it to council for, for your consideration because it doesn't pass the first justification of being able to justify why you're entitled to a special rate. Again, I would remind council that while being sensitive to anything that Again, I would remind council that while being sensitive to anything that deals with fees and rates to customers, if we go back to the compact fee days, it's going to be a lot worse for 95% to 99% of the customers outside the city boundaries. Through ordinance that is already in existence.
I appreciate that, and I also think that if this is bad and this is bad, then, you know, two bad choices is not really a good choice at all, or it's not really a good choice. So I'm just trying to understand how we can do this, because I certainly understand, we've had those conversations about how it's important that we move forward on this, yet I don't want to jump into a place where we're now setting up a whole demographic of folk to be basically put in a situation where they don't have access to the information. How are we going to get the information out to people that they might have the ability to go through this process? Because I think that that would set us up to not be equitable.
I think that if there's concerns, I think those concerns will be addressed by including in our material that goes out to all of our users. We can point them out to Section 1729. To some extent, it comes down to the customer, you know, reaching out to public works and saying, you know, hey, I'd like to look into this issue. This is a concern of mine. We can't hold everybody's hands, but we are there to answer and help people along the way, should there be concerns and questions, to the best of our ability. We want to be as fair as we possibly can, but we need some guidance, and we feel like we're moving in that direction as to how we handle fees for both the users inside the city and outside the city. And that's what we're looking for with some finality here tonight.
And I know we don't, huh? Maybe Eric, do you have something you can say about that? Because, I mean, I do think you're right, we can't hold hands for people, but we are here to be servants.
Yeah, no, and I get very comfortable.
And make sure they are fair, people know what they need to do.
Eric Plaumbach, Public Works Director, 13th floor of this building. I guess I totally understand where you're coming from. I would say that there's a special rate agreement that was put in place in 2005, shortly after the council decided they wanted some control over the special rate agreements and enacted an ordinance, which we're calling 1729, that essentially set the language so that there had to be a clearly definable reduction in cost to the wastewater treatment plan, okay? And those are going to be key for all of us as we look at anybody coming in. And since 2006, we have not had, to my knowledge, any requests for special rates that have come in beyond that initial contract that was enacted. And so we haven't had a court or a bunch of people coming in. The burden of proof will be on them as per the ordinance, and the process will be, like we talked about, going through the Board of Works and then coming to the council for a ratifying resolution before it becomes effective.
So how do you understand, you said it has to be a significant savings to the city?
Yeah, clearly definable reduction in cost.
Right. So that means that basically the big guy, which, I mean, this may be okay, but I'm just clarity, so basically the big users are the ones that's going to?
No, well, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say, it's not significant, it's clearly definable reduction in cost. It doesn't set a limit, it just needs to be a definable reduction in cost.
All right. So is it, because again, I heard a couple of things, and I don't mean to belabor this, but I just want to understand it. I heard a couple of people speak, and it sounded like they might be in the same position, even though they're individuals, like, individual households, they may be in the same situation as the big companies here. So they, if they could demonstrate that, they too could possibly, we're not determining that now, but as long as they can demonstrate the same types of significant, not significant, whatever.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Reduction in?
They're going to have the exact same burden in the ordinance that anyone does. Everyone has the exact same burden. And that is to show in writing substantiating clearly definable reduction in cost to the plant. So we can say, because of that reduction, there should be a special rate assigned to that.
And again, just for clarity, if we don't pass this, we will have to go back to the compact or we don't have any time.
Yeah, so, and that is part of the issue. So if you recall, previous ordinance had 20%, we have a 20% surcharge on water, we got zero on sewer right now. However, there were also assessments, okay, which were, in the overwhelming majority, if you recall, much more expensive than the new way of calculating equity charge, which is through SDCs, which everyone pays inside and outside the city. Prior ordinance, there's not only the assessments which are more expensive, but there's also a 10% surcharge on sewer and a 20%, I believe, on water with no residential caps, which was different than inside the city. So that stuff went away with the ordinance as well as, and most importantly probably, is the compact piece, right? So if you're on sewer or water, one utility, it's 30%, the difference in tax you pay inside the city and outside the city. If you're on both, it's 50%. Again, in the overwhelming majority of cases, that was much more expensive if we were charging the compact than charging a 40% surcharge by far. And so the problem was, we weren't enacting it, even though it's ordinance since 2002, we weren't enforcing the ordinance. And so, but we're in a position that we're going to have to do something. Now, to be clear, though, the ordinance is valid inside the city, but we sent out a letter through certified, I don't know what they call it, the mailings, noted, to 4,048 customers throughout the county. And on that, it told the time to in place in the public hearing as well as the provisions in the ordinance that were being changed. But what it didn't say was, it said 1779, 1781 are repealed and replaced with this language. So it gave the replacement language, but what people didn't see was what went out of the existing ordinance, which is in effect, which is the compact fees and the assessments that are currently in there.
So, I want to follow up with Councilwoman Preston. So basically, will there be a significant rate for resident and a significant rate for the business? Or they are just considered insignificant? Because typically, there's a business rate and there's a resident rate, but your word was significant. So back to the individual family versus individual business, will they be having two different rates or will the public works, all of which you say, well, that's significant? Is that significant based on percentage? So a house says a percentage, or a business says a percentage, or a particular threshold that they have to reach? I mean, that's the question number one. And last question, there's a lady that addressed the issue. She says she pays into the fund, but she's not allowed to have the benefits that happened when it came down to the floods this past summer. And so her thought was that if she's paying into the fund, she should be able to get the benefits of that? Could you share your thoughts on that? Why can't she or why should she? Or are there any particular things? That's the one, but that, and I wanted to address her.
Yeah, if I understood the first question, there's no difference in rate between a residential, industrial, commercial customer. Obviously, the more you use, whether you're residential, commercial, or industrial customer, the more you pay because that's how they're structured. The only difference, if this ordinance is moved forward, being inside-the-city customer and outside-the-city customer. Currently, outside-the-city customers on water have a 20% surcharge. Under the new rate ordinance that we have for the water rates, our recommendation was to move that to 14% as well, so it wouldn't be 20% anymore, it'd be 14. And then, they currently do not have one for wastewater, but it would go to 14%. So inside-the-city wastewater customer would be paying different than outside-the-city wastewater customer, but everyone inside or outside the city, whether residential, commercial, or industrial, would be paying the same rate. On the basement valve program, I'll have to look into that, Oliver. We created that program to help folks that had combined sewers and were getting backup on these large drain events. And it was because we know that we've got a multiple hundreds of million dollar program in front of us, and it's going to take a long time to get there as part of a long-term control plan. But in looking at that and trying to find ways to creatively solve it, we're also looking at maximizing the existing infrastructure that we have and keeping as much sewage in the pipes we possibly can. And in doing that, it may not specifically take care of all of those basement backflow issues that are occurring. And so, and actually, even with a full separation of sewers, which would be a multiple billion dollar event, you could have situations where you wouldn't completely take care of that. But, so what we're trying to do is give people an option to prevent sewage from coming into the basement and putting in industrial basement backflow planners. And the way that program works, I can give you details of the city. You sign up, and essentially, the city's paying half of the cost to have a licensed plumber come in and install the valve in your basement, and the homeowner pays half the cost. But that was limited to residential and it was limited to city residents.
Seeing no other questions from council or no other comments from council either, open up to a motion from council.
I would comment. It doesn't take a long time to figure out that this gets pretty complicated as it's proposed and as it's withdrawn or redrawn and reassessed. At some point in time, I think that everyone acting in good faith, and certainly the folks that have objections, and certainly council acting in good faith, you just have to let it, if it turns into an issue where there's a legal concern, that'll simply have to be addressed at the time that's chosen. This points out more than anything in my mind, as we look ahead, this enormous proposed, however it gets funded, at whatever percentage it's anybody pays, this extraordinarily expensive, and I think in many ways partially unnecessary, CSO consent decree that the city entered into, not fully understanding what the costs were going to be, what the cost to the city was going to be. So my motion and my recommendation would be that we go forward with this favorably affirmant. If it ends up with a court situation, and I think it did, or nearly did about 10 years ago, and we did the same thing. It ended up getting resolved, I think, with the legislature, through the legislature? No, okay. But we did go through this 10 years ago, or 15 years ago, whatever it was. Let the court decide. And we'll go from there? I think, I can say, I believe we're at the council, from my perspective, as acting in good faith to go forward with this. We spent an inordinate amount of time with regards to this, three or four months ago, as we, in numerous meetings. So I think we've acted in good faith. My motion would be that it go forward favorably.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I need the?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one in opposition. With that, I will entertain a motion, devise a resolution to the community, the whole. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We lost our part. Chief Deputy?
Okay. Ms. Fowler, third reading on 6616.
That was continued.
Sorry about that. We need to vote on it, make a motion on the?
I moved it 6616, we continue to.
Second.
Indefinite. It was indefinitely. I believe it was indefinite. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 7716, please, Ms. Fowler.
7716, third reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the property located at 3720 Lincoln Way West, Councilman District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Can I have a motion to continue that to?
To 13.
Or to 14, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to approve the substitute bill.
I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the substitute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Two.
Two 13.
Two 13.
And your second?
This is the motion is in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
7816. Motion to continue to 213.
I have to read it. Third reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance.
No, you don't. You don't have to. You haven't read it because you're going to continue it to 213.
Oh, okay, got it.
I screwed you up on the one.
All right.
So there's motion for 7816 to be continued.
Second.
Gavin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 0117, third reading, please.
Third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley from South Ridaway of the west Sherwood Avenue at distance of 255 feet and a width of 14, west of South Michigan Street and east of South Main Street.
Motion for adoption?
Pass.
Second.
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 All right, Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Groton?
Aye.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
0517, please.
0517, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the city of South Bend, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2017, Eddie Street Phase Two, and the principal amount not to exceed $25 million, and approving other actions in respect thereto.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Groton?
Aye.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. 0617, please.
0617, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance 100461-16 for customers outside the city corporate boundaries.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Groton?
Aye.
Dr. Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Nay.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Resolutions, Ms. Fowler, would you please read 1703?
1703, a resolution confirming the adoption of a declaratory resolution designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 401 East Colfax Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46617, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement for the Commerce Center Development LLC.
Speaker President.
Brian Plastin, Office of Community Investment, Office of Department of Work and for the Building, yeah, make sure this comes up. No changes from the previous time, I'm happy to recap it if you'd like, but this is the 10-year, 100% at, five years at 100% and five years at 95%. There's been no changes since the, petitioners here, if there are any additional questions or otherwise.
If the petitioner will come up, state your name and address and quickly give a brief summary answer.
Belvede, Canada, offices at 401 East Colfax Commerce Center, Matthews LLC. We are, nothing's changed, it's the same project, and we would just ask a favorable recommendation from you.
Thank you. Any questions for either the presenter or the petitioner from council?
Yes, a few, please.
Ms. Groton.
So, obviously, the success of this project and then the tax abatement on the back end of it, just a quick guess, no, has the developer yet today provided?
of it, just a quick guess, no, has the developer yet today provided the city, the redevelopment commission, or the council any feasibility studies to substantiate and/or delineate the parking numbers associated with this project or the residential type and mix with this project? And asking the question is because there have been some substantial changes in terms of height and the number of stores. So, has, yes, no, and I can go through those again if you'd like.
I imagine a question about residential numbers in terms of the units, it's 144 units.
But, yeah.
So, yes on that. There's been no feasibility study done by the developer that's been handed over to the city.
Okay. Any condos included in that or condominiums or are they all apartments?
Right now, it's all apartments because they're, we don't have like a market study saying that there's a need for condos. So we will do them apartments until...
And what about the residential, thank you, the residential mix itself, one versus two versus three bedrooms, again relative to the housing studies or...
Currently, right now, we are doing a study with the East Bank Flats and we have a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. We are looking at possibly adding four bedrooms into the mix, but majority will be, percentage-wise, will be one-bedrooms and studio apartments. And then, but depending on what happens with East Bank Flats, that could possibly change.
Okay. And again, asking that question, there's obviously a lot of residential units coming online and so success, I think, knowing what's coming down the hike and, you know, getting the right mix here is important. Last two questions, the grocery market square footage to the number of parking spaces ratio. Has anybody benched, identified that, Mr. Profsky, and has it been benchmarked against industry standards yet?
So the square footage of the grocery space went down after the last agreement, provided that stands that may impact a little bit the number of spaces, but as of right now, we're keeping that placeholder on the first number of spaces. That's based on traffic counts that I think Rob Barlow did in previous times for other stores, not just this site, other stores as well, I think specifically in Elkhart. But as of right now, we're keeping the placeholder on the current number of spaces on the assumption that if some square footage is lost, there may be a slight adjustment.
Okay. And then benchmarking that against industry standards for that square footage. Do you see the difference?
I do. I would have to tell you that I think Rob's relying on what he's seeing existing in his stores. So industry standards in a place like, say, a downtown market with this type of urban feel that's in Alexandria, Virginia today is just going to be different necessarily than the one here. What Rob has been doing is, as far as we understand it, is basically plotting his plan to coincide with what he thinks he's seeing at his other stores, again, namely Elkhart of this type. Some, I think, information has been taken from the Martin's and Harris' Square, but I think predominantly he's kind of seen as he goes, as he said when he was here, some of this is a moving target as they continue to pursue it.
Okay. So relative to that question, there was a consultant that was brought in by the city, internationally renowned Tori Gallus Urban Designer. Has any of those recommendations been picked up in terms of decreasing the number of units facing the garages? And I guess I ask this question because I'm looking for the record to get caught up, the public record, to get caught up with the actual changes as part of the compromise. So I, and changes, I'm specific to site plan, to design of the building, different views, you know, the traditional views of the building itself. And that will be, that will be my last question.
Okay. Relative to the tax abatement, please.
And it is all relative because it gets to feasibility and viability in the long term.
Sure. Sorry to screw me up.
So, can we go back on that? So catching up the public, right?
Oh, sorry. Yes, catching up the public. So two things. First point is, I think as Velvet's kind of showing in, Rob's plans indicate, again, we're looking at a 12-month planning period. Some things will inevitably change during that period as well, so we'll have to catch it up on the back end. But in terms of what they've done respective to Tori's suggestions, the East Ray space was definitely done as part of larger conversation that Tori had initiated about that space specifically. There's some other things regarding, I think, the design overall, the building that could have had an impact in the space that those have been adopted. And then in terms of the garage, when you consider the amount of spaces and the need from not just the site for this building going up, but also the existing Commerce Center, I think some of Tori's suggestions were looked at, may not be feasible in the long run, but they're not dead yet, I would say. I mean, we're looking at the orientation of the garage overall, but I think as it sits now, is how it will stay. Again, we have 12 months of planning ahead of us.
So is that, is that a formal report on that, the Tori Gallus, or was that just the presentation that we all sat, that several of us sat in as a...
It was part of that overall presentation or conversation. They had other phone conversations with the developer specifically that we were not included in, where they kind of went over more in depth and they were taking, the same things were discussed, I think, just more specifically in those cases.
Just last question. Has an architect been hired? That was a follow-up from the report, getting at the ideas of some of the feasibility issues and long-term viability. Has an architect been hired yet? Versus design, lovely design, wonderful, beautiful, accent, you know, complements the neighborhood in actual design, but has an architect been hired or will, has or will?
So I think in addition to the ones that's on staff from the developer side of the house and then some of the suggestions that Tori provided, the city is not in any position to hire an independent.
No, 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 not the city, has the developer.
There's one on staff who's a developer, yes.
Okay.
And they'll be working towards the plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate you responding to those questions.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question, the slide and...
A lot of numbers, I know.
Do you invest that $5 million, does that, that doesn't include the TIF money or is that up there?
That is, that does, that is...
That is the TIF money?
Yes.
So then there's the abatement on top of that.
Yes.
Okay. So what that brings it to like 11?
10, 10 and a half, 11. I mean, assuming our tax numbers are more or less right, yes.
Okay. And then the state, the money from the state.
4.9.
Right. Okay. So we're getting close to almost half is tax dollars going into the whole development?
The regional city's plan was basically 2020 and then 60 was kind of the idea, is a combination of the two state and local funding sources in addition to the private. That was kind of the goal for the overall capital.
Okay. And the Tori Gallus, how much did we pay them, you know, off top?
It went through the board of workers. I want to say off top, I think it was either $5,500 or somewhere thereabouts in that, in that range.
And then a quick question for Velvet. I just like coffee velvet. You put a name. Anyway. You said in response to one of the questions, did I understand like right now it's apartments, but that could change because you're doing a market study? Is that what you said?
No. So she was asking about how many apartments would be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and four-bedroom. And so right now, currently, the East Bank Flats are going up and we are in process of selling those as apartments, but it's also, there's one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom on each floor. So as we see a demand of, are there more demand for three-bedrooms or two-bedrooms with one goes first, then that will help us with our mix for what we will actually put into this project.
But all apartments? Because I heard something about condominiums.
Correct. So right now in South Bend, we don't really have a high demand for condominiums. So the plan has been, most of our projects, to start with apartments and then what we thought later, maybe we could condominium or apartments.
So it's not designed difference, it would just be just...
No, it's not a design difference. It's just a marketing, whether you actually own or...
Absolutely. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1703, please come to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Jesse Davis, appeal box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I came out and spoke in favor the last time, having the fact that you're getting some more housing, more density, which is what everybody wants, a pharmacy and a grocery store, which they've been begging for for years, a great idea. There was a compromise made, let's do it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sandra Brown, 222 East DeVry Street, City of South Bend, Republican Washington Group, City City United for Designing. Our Western project has spoken in favor of it from day one. Now it's time to put it to sleep and pass it. It should go down there, should go prior to the city of South Bend.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1703, please come to the podium. Seeing none, let's turn it back to council.
Motion for adoption?
Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Groton?
Nay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wardy?
Aye.
Councilmember Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
President Tim Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll go to first readings. Ms. Fowler, 0717, please.
0717, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, East-West Alley from East Rightaway of Laurel Street, a distance of 44 feet and width of 12 feet, north of Thomas Street and south of Washington Street.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to send this to Public Works and Property Vacations?
Second.
13, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to continue to seven, I mean, to 27, appeal and certificate of appropriations for 1240 West Thomas Street?
With no other postponements.
With no other postponements.
Except for extraordinary cause. What would be considered extraordinary cause?
The almost, the substantial, the death of a family.
Okay. Okay. Put that caveat on the motion, is that fine? Will you, Ms. Fowler?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there any new business?
I don't know, just, I think before I do this, I would love to have an update on the Tampa and Olive Street exchange.
Before you do that.
All right, great. Get in the hang of this stuff.
Okay.
If we can get that, that'd be great. I'm ready to move into the South Side Town without going through downtown. And a traffic study at the, I think there's a traffic study going on at the corner of South Michigan where we had that accident this morning.
Yes.
Would love to have an update on that.
Okay. Anything else on new business? Seeing a, we'll move to the privileged floor. Privileged floor, this is where individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals may address only issues which the city has jurisdiction. Individuals shall not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. That is everything tonight. The council president may assign a topic raised by the individual during the privilege of four appropriate council member or request city clerk to contact a member of the city administration to review the comment. All topics assigned shall be assigned to regular council meetings. Go ahead, sir. Name and address.
I just want to touch basis on what Regina was just talking about. Number one, you know, hopefully everybody says a prayer for the family that lost their little 11-year-old son today. There was previous studies, I'm assuming, done. I believe there was one by American Structure Point in 2015, probably for smart streets. And somewhere in there, I guess, it was suggested to eliminate that light. Then we covered the lights up and we put a sign up, said it's under study. So I'm not sure if that study's still going on, if it's been concluded, but I think we need to look at not only traffic, but the pedestrian traffic. That, that needs to have special interest with transport being right there. The buses used to exit onto Michigan Street and only be able to go north, which they got hemmed up at that traffic light. So I'm sure transport was greatly appreciated of that light being gone because it allows them to really flow out of there. The other problem is, is we've got little children who cross that street, obviously. Everyone's fully aware of that now. Those children were used to only having to look for traffic from the south. Today, it appears they got hit by a vehicle coming from the north. We've got elderly people, we've got disabled people who have complained on social media. I think some of them have came here. They ride that bus. That's their only means of transportation. They have to exit the bus and cross that intersection to get to the social security office where they have to do business frequently. Then they have to make their way back across the street to catch the next bus out of there. So to eliminate crosswalks was, number one, very foolish from the start, and I think that we need to look at putting some type of crosswalk up there, even if it's like the one on Twickenham near Notre Dame where you have a button and all traffic patterns flash red so that you don't have an actual traffic light, but traffic will stop. There's got to be something done there, and if that study's been finished, I'd be curious to see why they took that light out of there.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
My name's Charles Smith. I live at 2023 South Taylor Street. Yeah, I totally agree about that light at that location. It should have never been removed. Unfortunately, life was lost and unfortunately it was a child. As something I woke up to this morning on my way to work, it's not something anybody really wants to see. I'm here to address the issue that I talked about last time, but a lot of trust has been broken, relationships damaged, and it comes with an effect. At a past meeting with the new director with a few, some serious accusations were made against several people that could damage their characters. It has and will continue to have an effect. Recently, there was an email, email exchange when recording a neglect situation during that exchange was mentioning a criminal info. That info was shared with a private citizen. I did make the director of code enforcement aware, no response came back of it, and that's why I'm addressing that here today. Also, also concerns should remain confidential. I no longer trust that TIF or criminal info will remain confidential. The fight that has been caused by one of the forced decisions by the shelter has caused a huge gap between the animal welfare community. With the gap, the shelter cannot show its true potential. The trust is gone, but a relationship is repairable. Take Lucky as an example. Lucky was a beautiful dog that had an issue, one that could have been fixed with the right resources. I truly feel in my heart that if this gap wasn't here, he would have been saved and here today. Let's talk enforcement. I have countless, I have seen countless numbers of dogs be abused, neglected, threatened, and even came up with fighting injuries here in South Bend, all which seems as not easily enforced due to the barriers to the city. There is a situation that could not be addressed out of seven dogs forced to remain at home. It took citizens to pull three, two in which are in horrible condition and one of them has lowered jaws to be exposed to the bone. Please do whatever it takes to make enforcement happen. Community relies on SBACC and law enforcement to address situations. I can't blame all enforcement issues on their agencies. I'm aware the issues that, that have a barrier for them. Ordinance must be revised as soon as possible. This ordinance process takes time and yet it was pushed back again.
Thirty seconds.
Also, make it clear I will do anything to help bridge the gap that exists. My focus is animal welfare. That's my number one focus. Also, please make sure that crosswalk, again, next to the transport is safe and functional as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name and address.
In your, in your question, you said we could have the comments like referred to a committee or something?
Excuse me?
In your, when you, you know, is there a way to get this referred to like, it would be like public safety or something? I mean, there's the two issues. There's been a lot of complaints about something with the animal patrol, I want to say that more, but then also the traffic light.
Yep. I know Eric's already started looking at the traffic. All right, thank you.
Samuel Brown, 222, East of Bar Street, City City, City South Bend. About three years of dialogue in the city of South Bend, like in the permanent street for the names that are there, Dr. Martin Luther King. I lived three years, a lot of hate mail, a lot of dialogue. The mayor of the city, the commanding chief of our city, stood up and did the right thing. I worked on that committee. I want to thank the council that voted me on that committee. I got a lot of data, a lot of information, a lot of tears and a lot of pain about this street. But it was the right thing to do. A lot of people are not going to agree, only history is going to tell the whole tale. But I know one thing. What I'm upset about is this picture here. I'm very hurt about that picture. This picture should have been the one that went to the front page, or the second page, or the third page, no matter, but this is the picture. Because the commanding chief is standing by that sign. It was years and years alone to sell us the creatures asleep. He did it. I commend him for being brave enough, strong enough, and intelligent enough to stand up and make that decision. Now, we got to lay it away. We, the citizens of South Bend, whether we agree or not, got to appreciate him standing up. He's a Rhodes Scholar, and that's probably why he was able to do something, I think, because Rhodes Scholars think out of their box, not in their box.
Thank you, sir. Next name and address.
My name is Brenda Bailey. I live at 3621 Cooper Court in South Bend, 46614. Tonight I'm here, last time I spoke about animal welfare, also bringing it up again. There needs to be a lot of clarification on what is going on at South Bend Animal Control. We as a pet-loving community here in South Bend, we are a very animal-loving community, and we follow social media, several groups, several pages. There's many boards, lots of things in the works, lots of fundraisers everywhere. The common thread here, what I'm seeing, is what happened to the relationship we were building and forming. The community remembers on these pages, they want answers. They're afraid now of SBACC. I have people messaging me, I just happen to be moderator on one of the pages, I have people messaging me, I can't take this dog here, I'm afraid to call, I'm afraid to make the report. Legally, we have no choice but to follow the law. We see there needs to be a moderator or somebody called in that can help bridge this gap, because the gap is just tremendous right now. I asked why the 90-day, last time at the last council meeting, I asked why the 90-day ban on BOW, care of South Bend, and the rescues happened, and that was like strike one in the community. Strike two, another dog named Lucky, that was just euthanized a few days ago at the hands of the new director, who just so happens to be the one stopping BOW, various rescues from pulling, pulling dogs to help the shelter, except for one, who is Linda Chandler, Chandler, from Camp Canine, I understand. I have not personally confirmed that fact. The euthanized numbers were getting low. Now, I feel like we're just going in backtrack and wasting our time. I don't want to go over the story with Lucky, but we are asking for a public investigation into Lucky, especially when we consider it basically murder at this point. He had surgery, he had a behavior specialist willing to help him, and he had two rescues who stepped up to take him. He did have some issues, there were, there was plans in the works to all that be, to be worked on. To me, that was the director's 90-day ban that killed him. I mean, I spent three hours literally crying this weekend over this, and I just can't tell you how it affected me.
30 seconds, ma'am.
A lot of people are following his story. A silent vigil has been discussed as well as a protest. This isn't the end of the story. We want to know how you plan on repairing the fallout damage from your new animal care control director. Thank you.
Next name and address, please.
Marlena Ballard, 52670, Primrose Road, South Bend, 46628. I am actually here to support South Bend Animal Care and Control. In this gap that's being talked about, I have tried to be involved in getting people back together, and certain people just don't want to do that. I currently am helping the new director start a cat enrichment program and do some things that are kind of new, that will expand, you know, the shelter a little bit, that's going to educate people again. I don't know where it got off track. I quit animal stuff three years ago because of all this nonsense, like right now that's going on. And again, I just don't know where it got off track. I personally had older people that I was involved in, you know, six to 10 years ago, five years ago, private messaging me because of everything that's going on. It's all about egos right now. Everybody's about their ego, their group. Lucky, it's a sad story, it really is, but he really, and I know she cried, everybody cries. We all cry. We don't like euthanizing anybody, but it had to be done. It needed to be an investigation. The money that was spent on Lucky sadly could have went to a lot of other animals, or how many people keep their animals in their homes that already have them. And again, it's not fun, but it's reality. And the reality is, animals are going to get euthanized. And I, for her to only be, or I'm sorry, for Jen to only be in this position since November 15th, I think, and with the holidays, she hasn't even had a chance to get her foot in the door and really ground it. And that's really, everybody complains about the 90-day ban on BOW. Well, when somebody's just constantly nitpicking at you, how are you even supposed to start to figure out what plans you want to make? I just don't think that anybody's giving her a fair chance, Jennifer, a fair chance. And that's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
Good evening, council. It feels, Hugh Scooby, where I drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. His vice president guy didn't say, "It feels so good. It feels so good to be here tonight." I'm so proud of your, this council, I don't know what to do. They overruled me and my street committee, we weren't a street committee, we were my supporters. Why Dr. Martin Luther King's street? You overruined that. But that's fine. We got a boulevard, we were fighting for a street. We got a boulevard. And guess what, y'all? I'm proud of that boulevard. I, and thanks to the street committee that y'all chose to give it to the community. It wasn't for Hugh Scooby in the first place, but you got one more step to go. The mayor promised that he would select a permanent street with a few businesses on it and a few addresses. So I'm going to hold you responsible for him putting those houses with a few addresses on it. And so we can't stop at the roundabout, we're going to have to go down Marion Street. Isn't that where your committee started at? Wasn't that where they were supposed to start? Come on, now be real with me, because I'm living out Dr. King's dream. Dr. King did give his life for elites and politicians to use a fundraiser. $25 for a meal, that's a fundraiser. Hugh Scooby picked up people from the homeless shelter, took them down to Bob Evans, and gave them $4.95 breakfasts, and they had food, full food. Dr. Martin Luther King donated $200 to the elites and the politicians. Samuel Brown.
Sir, you're talking to us. Come on, finish. All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Next name and address.
Anthony Bailey, 3621 Cooper Court, South Bend, Indiana, 46614. I'm here to talk about Lucky also. I think with the bills that were paid for his surgery and stuff, that there was resources out there for him. I don't think that, I think that it could have easily been contacted for him to go somewhere if he was not able to be there. Other things that I've heard are just hearsay, but I know that other people are losing trust in being able to have any animals go there. So that can be a safety issue in South Bend if we can't, if other residents won't call Animal Control, then there's a problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Most of your journey.
Second.
All in favor?
I think she was coming to the...
Oh, okay.
Oh. That's fast one.
I'll take you back.
Name and address.
The dog thing?
Excuse me, name and address, ma'am.
Of course. Mary Corbin, 1605 Southwood Avenue, South Bend, 46615.
Thank you.
I've been, I'm not here about the dog thing. That's a problem, but that's your problem. If there's this much misunderstanding in the community, then somebody's not doing what they're supposed to be doing. I understand, you put dogs down, that's what, that's what you're supposed to do, because people don't take care of them, and it's a damn shame. But when there is a problem with anyone getting an answer, then somebody's not doing their job, somebody who's on the city payroll. My real concern was, I can't, and I'm not the oldest person here, I can't read most of the stuff you put up, especially the things from the developers, so I would ask that you use a larger font, and also if you could all sit up when you speak, because it's very hard to understand what you're saying.
Appreciate that, and ma'am, there are copies of the whole packet up here.
Yes, but those don't have the things that were brought along. Those are just the pages of your...
Yeah, that's the form. You can always get from the clerk's office by the Thursday before council meeting, the whole entire packet, so.
This brings up one more thing, I'm sorry. How does one go about finding what all these things refer to? Do you see what I mean? I understand what we're talking about, but I don't know what that is.
Right, and that's getting with the...
Everything that's there is on those.
You can come into our office and we can navigate for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Most of your journey.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you all, good night.